Good evening. Welcome to the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting. Today's Thursday, April 4th. It is 5:32. And I'd like to call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Legions.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America. And here in the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is delegations where members of the community can address any of the items that are on today's agenda. Did anyone want to address? Okay, let's move on to new business. And we are continuing with our budget deliberations. The other night, we finished up Department. I guess we finished, and our next one up is 114, Government and Miscellaneous Benefits. Did anyone have any particular changes that they wanted to make? John?
Okay, on 114, I had two. Under Legal Services, item code 237 on Planning, I took off $1,000 on that. And the next one down, 238 Conservation, I took off $4,000 on that. So I hope anybody has anything to say about my reductions or not.
Oh, you're legal. Could you come again with the conservation?
Kevin, can you tell us where we are year-to-date with those legal fees, 237 and 238?
Yep, my computer is just crashed off the network, so I need a second.
You know, I was going to suggest the same thing with Conservation, because at this, through the quarter end, they were only at 14 percent utilization. So I was thinking we could cut the Conservation legal fees by 9,000. And I think the Planning was at 69 percent. So they're at 69 percent, three-quarters of the way through the year. So could probably... I don't know whether you're...
This is why we're getting a new accounting system. This one's a little slow.
Uh-huh.
Just trying to log on.
And Dan, I don't know whether you know of anything big coming up with that, or...
Well, are you talking just about Conservation?
You could address either Planning or Conservation.
Yeah. I know zoning right now, there's, there was a hearing yesterday, and there's the potential that we'll have to defend 14 depositions. And I don't know what the cost, if you have to contend with deposition for, you know, 14 potential depositions that have been, I don't know if you said they're determined, I don't want to say threatened, but, you know, suggested by opposing, and that's a concern to me. You know, if you get $3,000 per deposition to have someone show up, that could be a substantial liability. But I don't know if that, I think that's going to be in zoning, not in planning, but I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about reducing, you know, the ability to, you know, to put in for some fees or some of the litigation.
So then, with Planning, so I guess I'll start with John's first, Planning, a reduction of 2,000. That would, you know, bring it to 4,000, which would be below the 24 budget.
Well, I said 1,000.
Oh, 1,000.
Yeah, 1,000, which would bring it to 5,000, a little above what the amended budget was for '24.
Mm-hmm.
So for Planning, you know, $3,800 spent so far.
3,800 so far?
Eighty-five percent.
Okay. So I would say we probably shouldn't do anything with Planning if we're at 85 percent. Thirty-eight.
So you think 5,000 total is too little? You think it should stay where it is, stay where it is at six?
That's like three hours on an attorney.
Yeah.
Even between five and six, if they answer the phone, that whole line's gone.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's like one research thing. So just to keep, I mean...
All right. I can stay at six.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Conservation, can we take that down? I was thinking that we could reduce it 9,000, given that we're at 0 percent utilization, three-quarters of the way through.
So Conservation's at 16 percent?
Sorry, 16.
So we spent 2,500 bucks, 2,400. I don't know what's coming down the pike, you know, full disclosure there, but it appears to be one of the most underutilized legal accounts.
Yeah.
Not that one.
So you think we could take that down 9,000 to 15,000 total?
I think that's reasonable at this point. And how do we value 16 percent?
We've used 2,500 bucks so far.
Yeah.
But based on what's coming...
I think we might get away with that.
And well, based on what's coming up, should we move these reductions to zoning?
Let's just finish with Conservation first.
Finish with Conservation and then...
Yeah. Okay. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to reduce under Government Miscellaneous Benefits, under Legal Services, item 238 Conservation, reduce the $24,000 proposed budget by 9,000 to 15,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Rich.
With some of the future potential litigation, would any of that fall under the Conservation domain rather than just zoning?
I think right now zoning is the focus, and, you know, actions that are being brought under, it's had to be 30G, that's going to be in zoning. So, and that's where I think, you know, the exposure is for the town right now. And, you know, it seems really a lot of things going on, and, you know, I worry about that. So I want to make sure that we have enough to do.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries 6-0-0. So then, Paul, you had a...
Yeah, just a suggestion, just based on, it seemed to be a lot of these A30G applications coming forward, and the town attorney seems to be spending a lot of time at the zoning meetings, and like you said, you got depositions coming up. I don't know if that's going to be enough to cover that, or...
Yeah, and it's not only, you know, attendance at the meetings, but there's, you know, there's potential for having to go to Hartford for, you know, litigation, and we had a hearing yesterday, and it looks like there's going to be further hearings, potential depositions as a result of the judge's statement yesterday. So it gives me pause a little bit.
So this is the 42,000 for the zoning and Legal Services. So are you concerned that 42 is not enough?
Yeah, I mean, we can always, you know, if we don't spend it, that's great, but we want to make sure we have the resources to represent the town adequately. So maybe if you could maybe bring it up to an even 50,000, and then maybe add something back into the reduction, you know, the one, the reduced 12. Let's see, it was a 42, yeah, maybe keep it at 42.
Just leave it at 42, okay.
I just, I'm concerned, that's the one I'm really concerned about.
Yeah.
I guess I agree with Paul that I think our exposure in that line, I'd feel more comfortable if we had a little more cushion. But I follow whatever your feeling is, if you think 42 would be enough in the zoning one.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
You know, we're talking about individual lines within that legal. Why don't we just put it in contingency? It has to be transferred anyway, right? So anything, if you want 10 more grand, if you're thinking 10,000 or whatever it is, I think we put it in contingency. It's got to get a transfer anyway, right?
Right.
If we spend. And so just on another topic, I was just looking at the legal, because, I'm sorry, Labor. We have two labor lines, one General Government and one Public Safety. The police, we're not going to, next year, we're not going to have to negotiate with them, they're good till June 2026. Same with dispatch. Currently, we're negotiating with fire, so they should also be good through 2026. So I think, I think we can cut back that labor attorney fees, Public Safety, just everyone remember this, next year when we have to increase this double or triple, but I think we can get away with 12Gs there.
Okay.
The hope is to have the fire settled this year, so that would be nothing more than if there's grievances, things like that. I see we do 12, I think we get away 12 and 12.
Okay.
12 and both.
If we do 12, yes, we can cut 4,000 from the town attorney side, and then 8,000 on the Public Safety side, in an effort just to kind of save that zoning line. Or if we just cut everything and then just throw up a small portion of that into contingency or something, whatever your thoughts are, but...
So you're saying reduce labor attorney by 8,000?
No, the labor attorney fees line 235 by 4,000 to $12,000. And then labor attorney fees, Public Safety, to 12,000, so that'll cut down 8,000, that's a $12,000, there's 12,000 there.
Right. And then just leave zoning alone, and not reduce it by the 12?
So zoning right now...
Zoning, we're going to leave alone at 42, right?
Okay. I think that makes, can you do that?
You know, whatever you guys decide, just to let you know, zoning right now is about 22,000. So they're running about $2,000 a month. If we do $3,000 a month, that's 36,000.
But then we're back to the question of all the...
The A30Gs, if there's impending litigation that we know...
I think there's a potential for a couple hearings, so...
Okay. So let's leave zoning alone.
Okay, so we don't, we don't reduce it by the 12, we leave it at the 42, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's wise.
Okay. So anyone want to make a motion on 235 and 236?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Move to account number 114, line 235, Labor Town, reduced by $4,000. And line 236, Labor Public Safety, reduced by 8,000 to values of...
12,000.
$12,000 in each of those lines.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-0-0. I feel like having a First Selectman who's an attorney here, we've got an area of expertise here that...
I'm a lot of this, I'm a lot of this.
Yeah. I want to back up a little bit to the retirement liability. I know Kevin and I, we were talking a little bit about that and whether, you know, based on anything that you know so far, do you think that...
I think 175, we could get away with comfortably. There's, there's two individuals we know about that are potentially talking about retiring, but 175, she gets plenty of coverage there.
Okay.
I feel comfortable with that.
All right.
Because it's only the non-affiliates that kind of give us, they have a larger payout a little bit. The unions are a little, little easier, they convert some of their accrued time into the pension, so that saves us money in the general fund, but just increases the...
Pension liability.
Yeah, so...
All right. I'd like to make a motion then to reduce the Retirement Liability Account, 128, by 25,000 to bring the budget to 175,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions, no. Motion carries 6-0-0. Anyone have anything else for General Government and Benefits?
Just a question for Kevin. I know, we've talked about it before, but I can't find my notes. What was the increase on the health, the percentage this year?
2 percent.
2 percent, that's right.
I see that 0.08 year is scaring me.
It's just, it's always seems backwards, and you think it's going to go through the roof, but when you think it's going to go really high, it comes in low, and then when you think it's going to stay low, it...
Don't worry, next year, they'll walk us.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I think, they put low this year, instead of just doing 5 percent, 5 percent, or the 2 this year, and 10 next year.
Okay, so moving on to Services to Community. I know we talked a little bit about this when, the other night, but, you know, I've had sort of a philosophical, not good feeling about this whole Services to Community this year, mainly because, you know, we've unearthed that, like, there was a, one of them isn't really even in existence anymore. And, and I'm very sensitive to taxing our residents in order to donate money on their behalf. And I do think that if you're going to have a not-for-profit in your community, you, you need to make sure that you've got the support of your community. And then, sort of, my other thought around this was that probably past boards have said, yes, this is a good thing, because we're not providing that service here in the town, and so we want to foster some of these organizations that, you know, help meet the needs of our residents. And this year, in this year's budget, we have created the Youth and Family Services budget, and there's a lot of overlap between some of the organizations that have been getting the money here and the services that we're now going to be providing in that department. And we, even within Youth and Family Services, there's an overlap with things, the social services happening at the school, and so I just, I feel like there's, there's some duplication of efforts here. The other thing is, there's a very, you know, there isn't a real policy over how much do we give to everybody, like, who? And I think that all needs to be tightened up. So, you know, I, I don't want to pull the rug out from people, but I, you know, sort of want to say, okay, we're, we're taking a look at this, and I think, you know, what I would suggest is we cut that budget in half, and then put it back to the Board of Selectmen to say, here's the policy that we're going to create to govern this activity, and, and let them decide how the money should be allocated. I don't know whether some of these organizations also got money from any of the ARPA.
That's why I kept asking for the ARPA information.
Yeah, so, so I think, you know, my suggestion would be to have the Board of Selectmen create their policy of how they want to do this, and...
Right. That's in the future, but as a steward again for the taxpayer, I hate to be the Grinch, but for pretty much most of these services, I would say just eliminate them from the budget this year, because we are a tight budget, we are increasing by a pretty large percentage. The ones that I would not cut are number 905, Family Service Association. Some of these are kind of on a regional basis, and that there have been obligations. The others, 906, Homeless Shelter, New London Hospitality, the TVCCA, provides the Meals on Wheels. This one, I went back and forth on, the Eastline Student Government Scholarship. I thought a reduction of 1,000 to $1,000 for a scholarship, because the high school graduation gives a lot of scholarship money out, and both of the major parties give scholarships in that regard. The Eastline Vets, I proposed cutting 2,200 to 1,000 for them. And then the Vets' rep mileage reimbursement, Brian definitely deserves to have his mileage.
You know what? I'm just thinking for a second, Rich, do you have a total number that you had in mind?
Yes, yes. It's a reduction of $21,450.
And then maybe what you could do is work with the Board of Selectmen, because you have such a great grasp of what all these organizations do, and rather than us trying to say who we should eliminate, just do the dollar amount that, that you suggest, which was pretty much what I was coming up with anyhow?
Mm-hmm.
And then work with Dan or whoever he thinks to fine-tune all of those?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. You want to make the motion?
Yeah, just the last one that was going to be a keeper for me was the SACCEC. I wasn't really sure what that was, and then when I looked it up, it seemed to be something that addresses abuse, familial abuse, and that's just a small amount, 650 anyway. But I'll make the motion to reduce the Services to Community by $21,450, and the definition of which agencies receive money and how much to be decided upon in conversation with the Board of Selectmen.
Do you have the new amount?
The new amount? I think it's 20,324, if I did my math right.
Okay.
What was that, 20,000?
$20,324.
I don't know if everyone can see up here. So what I did was just zero out all of the services, create a new line called Services to the Community, allocated by the Board of Selectmen. Did that work?
Yep.
Thank you, Kevin.
So... I can't remember, did we take the vote?
No, we didn't take...
No, okay.
We have a motion.
We've got a motion.
Nobody seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Just make one comment.
Sure.
Going back a few years, I remember that a lot of these dollar amounts for these different organizations was very subjective, like, you know, we talked about the other night, it ranged from 500 to 6, $6,300. And I forget how some of these numbers were arranged at, but a lot of these were just, like I said, subjective on what people at the time thought they could use. Now, whether they used all that, you know, Kevin, you'd see what uses it has been over the last year or two.
Of this money?
Yeah.
Hundred percent. It gets dispersed out, start of the year.
And then there's no further...
They just automatically get the dollar amount?
They, most of the time, they submit a letter, a request letter for the funds, like the first week of the year, they know, they know when the money comes in.
So they know what they're getting, and then...
They know what they're getting, yep, they're, yeah.
And then there's no follow-up to see, you know...
No, request, okay.
Until we get the letter next year.
Yeah.
And is more discussion. Part of what went into my reasoning was many of these organizations did receive ARPA money, and some in pretty substantial amounts, a lot more than what the Services to Community grants were.
Okay.
Did these organizations come in front of the Board of Selectmen, or they didn't?
Not that you mean this year?
We already had a couple.
Yeah, we got letters, and some of them...
We got letters. Colonization Pathway spoke, and someone else spoke. They were, yeah, a few of them came to one of the meetings.
Yep.
Giving card.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-0-0. So we are now on to zoning, 116, very minimal increase of 1.13 percent. I didn't have anything there. I don't know whether anybody else has something.
You mentioned that the software that was for all the departments, that's, that was in the Planning or Building?
Building.
Which one is it, I'm sorry?
They're all...
The software, so it's not...
It was just in the one spot, right?
Yeah.
Splitting it up?
Correct.
Okay.
I think, yeah, the entire software package is within the Building Department, just like the two admins, it was in the Building Department as well.
Where are we on miscellaneous supplies?
We love that line, don't we?
It's on my staples.
About halfway through, 61 percent.
Well, you know, I'd say let's reduce them, you know, and get it back to the 1,200. I'll make a motion to reduce the Miscellaneous Supplies Budget in Account 320 by 200 to 1,200.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries 6-0-0. There's, one of the things that I've been speaking with Kevin and Dan about was the GIS Intern, Assistant Town Planner Intern line, and what's happening in that department, and whether, whether we think we can drop that by some personnel type of...
Yeah, so this is a, this is really an intern, and right now, there's two spots. So there's this in the Planning Department for 15,000, now 10,000, and then if you flip forward a little bit, 132 as well, has the second tranche of that Assistant Environmental slash GIS Planner under Department 132, and that got cut back to 15. So the First Selectmen cut it, originally it was requested at 30, we cut it back to 15. We haven't spent anything to date, but I believe the intern starts either this month or early next month. So it's, so it's this one in line 117, and then two pages more in 132, right under Conservation Officer, there's 5,000 left for Assistant GIS Planner. So what's in that now, 10? I mean, I do unpaid internships in my finance office, but 15,000 for an internship is, that's probably more than one internship. So I.
So you think we can cut that by five thousand?
I mean, so we're seven months, we're, what, nine months into the year? And we haven't hired an intern yet. So, I mean, if we set a budget for it and say, hey, this is what you got, you know? We're, I think that's reasonable.
Yep.
Right?
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion there?
We're talking two thirteen, by five thousand dollars?
Two twelve.
Yeah, two twelve by five thousand. GIS intern. And planning. I, I can make it.
I don't have it on my book.
I don't have it in my book.
You don't have the planning department?
No, I have the planning department, but I don't have line two twelve.
Oh, I guess I've been going by the.
Two thirteen.
I have line two thirteen.
Yeah.
Does it say, does it say GIS intern slash Assistant Town Planner?
No, it says Environmental Planner, Assistant Town Planner.
Can I just take a look here?
Line two thirteen.
All right, yep, so this.
That should be.
Two twelve, yep.
That should be two twelve.
Correct.
Okay. And it should be GIS intern?
Correct, yep. So, yeah, in the front of the book, maybe you want to take it out, that giant operating summary?
Yeah.
It's only four pages, that's kind of where I was, so.
Okay.
Same, same on.
How long does the intern expect to?
They don't have one.
Uh, the intern expected to start, I guess, I think mid-May. I think it's like a eight, ten week internship, maybe twelve months. I know they interviewed a couple of months ago, but person hasn't started yet, so.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to reduce the GIS intern Assistant Town Planner intern budget in either two twelve or two thirteen, wherever it's planned.
Officially two thirteen.
Two thirteen. By five thousand. To a, um, so we were at, we were at ten thousand, but reduced by five thousand to five thousand. Yep.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six zero zero. Didn't have any, does anyone have anything else in planning? So.
What about miscellaneous supplies?
Oh my goodness. Where do we stand?
Couldn't get by that.
No.
Thank you for your.
Eighty, eighty-five percent expended, so, okay, that's running a little high.
They're on track.
Those boots are expensive.
Right?
Okay, so. Finance Department. So. We are, um. You know, we've been trying to build up our finance department, that was, so there. You do a lot of important stuff over there, so there's lots of things that, you know, I want to support in the finance department. But I think there might be a few things that just, in light of the overall budget, that I think we could. Manage to come down a little bit, we've got the personal contingency. I, I think we could reduce that by another ten thousand. I know the Board of Selectmen. Cut it from the original request.
Did you go to the contingency or?
One line.
I'm in personal contingency.
One, uh, one twenty, that's Department twenty.
Okay.
You got to be nervous there, I was like, what do you cut by ten thousand?
Sorry, I went to contingency, I'm sorry. Yeah, finance department, um, I was good with everything there, and then coming down to the contingency, that's where.
Okay.
We were going, sorry, I'm going to apologize, I had a very long day today. So, kind of running low on energy.
And there's a good explanation of miscellaneous there, so.
Yeah. So, on to contingency, I think we could, um, do a little bit there in the personal contingent, contingency. And while I completely support the Coastal Resiliency Fund creation and OPEP Trust contribution and creation of the OPEP Trust. You know, maybe we can start off with a little bit smaller numbers there, just to, you know. It'll be good for the rating agencies to see that we have created those and we understand we've got this liability. But maybe just start off a little bit slower as we can. So I was going to suggest, um, in the contingency total, a reduction of twenty thousand. Made up of ten thousand from personnel, five thousand from coastal resiliency, and five thousand from OPEP Trust. So I will make that motion as just stated. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, personally, I, I'd like to see the Coastal Resiliency Fund left at twenty-five thousand. Since you're taking fifteen thousand out of the other two lines, it's still a fifteen thousand dollar reduction.
Yeah, I'd like to see them stay as, the two stay as well, I think that's a, you know, small enough placeholder for, you know, the rating agencies want to see a lot bigger number than that. It'll start somewhere.
On the other hand, I think it might be very effective with the rating agency if we start low and raise it next year. You know, if we start too high and just either have to lower it next year or leave it the same, I don't think it'll look as good. So I'm kind of in favor of starting a little lower, so we have room to raise it.
It, it's all what your definition of low is, twenty-five thousand versus twenty thousand. You know, it's, as the expression goes, spitting distance, so. I, I think if you, if you're going to make a commitment to go to it, then if, if we don't stick with this, then next year, I've afraid it'll be a target for getting reduced again, no matter what is presented next year. And this went through the first selectman and through the Board of Selectmen, and that's just my personal opinion is to leave it where it's at.
Do we have a target amount for this fund?
You know, I, not, I, I think it's, it's more important that we have a line item than we're starting to contribute to it.
Yeah.
You know, I guess there is some logic to maybe coming in a little bit lower so that next year we can add to it, maybe. Maybe instead of reducing them each five thousand, you reduce them each twenty-five hundred on the coastal and all that. I, it's totally within your discretion.
Yeah.
We can live with it either way.
Yeah. I'm just, you know, very concerned about where the all-in mil rate is going to get to, and I'm just trying to do what we can.
I think, you know, I, I think we can live with the, just hope the weather doesn't keep blasting that long. But I think the most important thing is we have a line item and it's there.
Yeah.
And if we can probably, you know, do the same a little bit better next year, then I think that makes us, maybe it does make us look even better.
Yeah, just speaking from the S and P rating agency side, they wanted to see establish the fund. The fact that we're putting money into it and establishing the fund, I think, they didn't ask for a dollar amount with it, so I think anything towards that would be good. The OPEP contribution was really a, um, a pie in the, you know, a little pie in the sky. So, I mean, if you put a thousand dollars and we just say, hey, we budgeted for it.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, the difference between a, a thousand or ten thousand on a three-plus million dollar liability is a rounding error.
Yeah.
So just a, you know, just an idea there. Right, I mean, even, even ten thousand's not going to be enough to establish OPEP Trust.
Just a thought with the Coastal Resiliency Fund, again. We've had an open space fund which we pretty much drained. And as far as I recall, I've never seen a line item for open space fund. That, that amount that was in there must have been before I, I had gotten onto the board. And, you know, we, we talk about establishing a line item for coastal resiliency. I also think that open space is in a, a pretty important function for the town. I can understand letting that go this year, and I can understand creating the line for the coastal resiliency. But I, I would really like to see an open space line next year then, under these plans.
Which, you know, is up to the Board of Selectmen.
Right, we, we don't make policy.
Yep.
No, I understand, but, you know, we, I, I listened and, you know, I, I'm a good listener and I appreciate all your commentary and, you know, this is a back and forth process. We're working together, trying to get.
Yeah.
Get the right tone here for the town.
Yep.
I think we've already reduced, I mean, we reduced it sixty-five thousand from last year's budget, I think that's, um, I'd like to see it stay where it is.
Okay.
Well, uh, so I've made a motion and we have a second, so we could call that vote, and then if, if you'd like to vote no, then I'm, you know, we can, can then make another motion, I guess, too, if it doesn't carry.
Can you, can you repeat the motion, please?
So my motion was to, in the contingency fund, reduce the personnel contingency by ten thousand. The coastal resilient, resiliency fund, reduce it by five thousand, and the OPEP Trust contribution, reduce it by five thousand. So that the balances in the respective ones would be one hundred ninety thousand, twenty thousand, and five thousand. So, um, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
So, three, three.
It does not pass.
Um, well, do you want to?
Well, well, my thought on it is, I think I'd go along with Dan's recommendation on three hundred, the operating budget, item three and four hundred, to go to twenty-five hundred each. And I'd leave the payroll alone at ten thousand.
So reduce the coastal and the OPEP by twen, reduce them by two thousand five hundred?
Yeah, a compromise between the two.
And leave the personal contingency?
Yeah, minus ten.
Okay. So, that was your motion? I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, one, two, three, four. Opposed, two. So the motion carries, four, two, zero.
What were the, what were the cuts?
So.
Ten thousand on item five hundred.
Okay.
On item three hundred, twenty-five hundred.
So twenty-five hundred for each of them?
Yes.
Okay. So fifteen thousand total?
Just, uh, before we go on, a reference to what Rich was talking about with the, uh, open space fund. There is still money in the open space fund, where would that, so there should be a line item somewhere that just shows no, nothing going in, right?
It's on balance, it's not in the budget.
So that's a different fund, open space fund is, so this is only the general fund, the town has, you know, thirty odd funds.
Okay, so it's a separate, it's not a line, line item, it's a separate fund.
Um, but if you wanted to fund it, it would have to be an operating transfer outline item, budgeted in the general fund, which is not this year. We, we transferred two hundred thousand out of it, there's approximately twenty, uh, twenty-five grand in there.
Okay.
Remaining. So there's something there, buddy.
Okay, so on to the Board of Finance. So, not a whole lot there, we've got, you know, the audit services that we all know is. We don't have much room to negotiate with a few auditors that are willing to do municipal audits, so. I did look at the four twelve, the PT Clerical Recording Secretary, and I think, where, where are we so far in the year?
Seven ninety-eight.
Seven hundred ninety-eight dollars?
Yeah, so you're eleven hundred, twelve hundred, twelve fifty for the whole year.
Yeah, so I would suggest we reduce that two thousand.
How much?
Reduce it two thousand to get to one thousand five hundred. So I will make that motion to.
You go.
To reduce the admin clerical line in the Board of Finance by two thousand to a balance of one thousand five hundred.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, no, motion carries, six zero zero. Does anyone have anything else for Board of Finance?
I'm willing to reuse my binder next year.
We do.
The miscellaneous.
We, we do.
Can we, can we check your miscellaneous supply line? It didn't appear you had one last year.
Yeah.
So it, it doesn't appear, uh, seven fifty, uh, there was nothing spent, I just bite out of the finance office.
Okay.
So I think we could cut this.
Yep.
Okay, cool.
What about all the paper we use?
It comes out of my budget, so when you see my budget going sky high, it's.
Yep. Anyone want to make that motion? Cutting the whole thing.
I'm ready to reduce line three twenty miscellaneous supplies to zero, a reduction of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six zero zero.
We'll find yours next year.
Uh, on to Board of Assessment Appeals. Not much there. Anyone have anything for Board of Assessment Appeals? No?
I'll check miscellaneous supplies.
Okay. Twenty-five dollars.
Look at that, they didn't spend anything.
I think their big one there is.
You know what?
Their advertising.
Yeah, well, we'll leave, we'll leave the twenty-five dollars for them. Okay, ZBA. Not much there either.
Cut a hundred off my miscellaneous supplies.
Yep. Might as well. Where, where are they?
They only spent twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
They only meet, you know, once in a blue moon, right?
Yep.
So.
So, anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, uh, zoning Board of Appeals for item three twenty miscellaneous supplies to reduce, uh, that by a hundred dollars.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries, six zero zero. On to Inland Wetlands Agency. So I really didn't see anything there. Of course, we are going to check that miscellaneous supplies, but, um.
So Kevin, is line two thirteen the same intern as what was in the planning department?
Correct, so they used, they, they had a budget of about thirty thousand for interns. And it, it says, you know, they had a person that was working remotely out of Boston for a while that was doing GIS stuff remotely. She then got a full-time job in the Boston area, and so we just haven't had anybody for the last nine months or so. The idea is to, to fill it with interns for the time being.
So we'll have two interns, one from planning, one from inland. So we'll have two interns, one from planning, one from inland?
No, it's it's one intern just paid from two different lines, 'cause they kind of do GIS stuff in the planning department and other wetland review things or... I can't really speak too much to it, but I know it's just the one person. The budget is split into two. Just like the, um, the conservation officer, that's actually the planning director.
Right.
It's just part of his salary. Same thing with the police, uh, police chief.
Right.
EMD, yeah, just split into two.
Yep. Now, how much have they used of the recording secretary so far?
Seven fifty.
Yeah, so we might be able to cut some of that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
We could five hundred.
Yeah.
That motion?
Okay, s- um, I move, um, the inland wetlands agency, um, number one thirty-two, that the, uh, recording secretary line four twelve be cut by five hundred dollars to fifteen hundred.
I'll second.
Second.
Go ahead and second. And any dis- discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six-zero-zero.
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to ask is who, what's the consultant? 'Cause I noticed in twenty-three, they didn't use any consultants.
So this, this money is set aside, um, I I've talked to the zoning officer about this in his department, so I think it's kind of similar. So, uh, if there is something that happens at a, you know, commission level meeting where they need to hire an expert, if they didn't have some money set aside to get initially started with that expert, they'd have to go before the board and then the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to ask for, you know, a transfer out of contingency. So a thousand dollars is really like a deposit if they need like a wetlands expert or something like that. It wouldn't cover the full cost, but the idea is it's a, you know, almost a little contingency for them to do the initial deposit to hire somebody.
Get somebody retained.
Yep.
And...
I have a question, Kevin, about, uh, line two forty-five dues and membership.
Okay.
How much have they used so far out of the fifteen? Uh, fifteen hundred or fifty dollars, I guess it is.
Zero.
Nothing?
Nothing.
So she...
That whole, like, meetings, training, dues, memberships, and transport haven't been spent. And they didn't spend anything on miscellaneous supplies yet either.
Although the dues and membership, a lot of times, is just once a year, so you could see. And they do list the organizations they plan to belong to.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a figure, Kevin, when they do go, how much it is?
I imagine, um, I don't have that book in front of me, but I imagine it equals the fifteen hundred.
Yeah, they say the UCCD typically asks for a contribution of fifteen hundred.
Okay.
They probably, I wouldn't be surprised if it's like a June bill.
Yeah.
End-of-year kind of thing.
Okay.
So... And he also has two departments, right? He's got that planning department as well as inland wetlands. So it's very similar to the Board of Finance versus my finance department. They just might be shuffling some of the expenses up to planning. You know, so that that could also be against my judgment, but...
Well, I think since I haven't used anything in miscellaneous supplies, um, I I think... Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to reduce that, um, by seven hundred and fifty to a total of two hundred and fifty.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Which line, what number?
This is miscellaneous supplies. Okay, um, all those in favor? Did we say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then do seven fifty.
The water, water produced, I'm shellfish that went away.
Yeah, so they're, they have their own fund.
Yeah.
But for the next year or so, um, I just want to leave a dollar in there just so we can hold the the account open.
Okay. So now, um, one thirty-four, Brookside Farm Museum Commission. Did anyone have anything that they wanted to do there?
I had two. On, uh, item two twenty-five, under services, landscaping maintenance, I had that to be cut by a thousand dollars, depending on what the uses have been so far.
They've fully expended it already. She's spent most of her lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's, she's pretty ambitious over there.
Okay.
Her initial budget was a, a three X. If you, uh, if you look over at the department requests, um, she was asking for a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So she's, she's chomping at the bit to get that place, uh, safe for visitors.
What happened last year that there was such a big increase in the curator?
With a position, what, we didn't have a curator? And then, I just told the Board of Selectmen this last night. So, uh, Brookside Farm Commission went before the, uh, first selectman last year in the budget cycle. They asked for the twenty-five, six eighty, and, uh, and the first selectman at the time said, "Do you have someone starting? No, we don't, but we're advertising." "All right, well, we'll put it in contingency." That, a day later, they hired somebody. Um, but we already cut the budget and already went through the process, so that's why there was a large jump there. It's really had to do with the curator. And now that she's there, um, she wants to put on, you know, there hasn't been programs in the past. So you know, some of these lines have a jump in them. I mean, preservation, collections, and care for everything in that, uh, museum, there's a five hundred dollar expense line item. And so it looks like it's going up, you know, a thousand percent, but it's going up to five thousand dollars. And she has that money earmarked for certain projects. I believe there's a, um, a publication she wants to preserve, those rugby slime.
Yeah, found inside the wall. They were doing some work and they found this newspaper. I think it had been put up for, to be insulation or something, but it was, uh, Liberty Press or something, but it was, you know, a couple hundred years old or however old it was, and, uh, because it was in the wall, the ultraviolet didn't get to it and ruin it. So now they, she wants to make sure that it's...
Preserved.
Preserve properly, and she, a really enthusiastic person that's over there and, uh, trying to make things happen. She's got events planned now and they're using the barn, so, you know, uh, I'm hopeful that she's really gonna turn that place into something very special in the town, so...
And my, my only comment was that, um, in regards to the landscaping, you know, why is it that Parks and Rec does all the landscaping at the town buildings, but not this building? So I...
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit. In Parks and Rec, it's, it's, you know, they try to help them out, but they're really not staffed up to do it, you know, every, periodically. You know, if it's every two weeks or every, you know, however often it needs and, uh, you know, she, she will call them, Anna that runs it over there, the new curator, and, uh... But, you know, they're really kind of doing it as a favor every time they do it and try to weave it into their schedule, so they, yeah.
Uh, Jerry is right behind you.
Oh, Jerry, okay, Jerry.
Um, so, uh, uh, Jerry, Jerry, want to speak to that?
Sure.
Glad to know you're there, Jerry.
Hi, Jerry Locke, and Parks and Rec Director. Uh, yes, that's, that's pretty accurate. We typically go on a, kind of an on-call. When they, when they have a special event coming up and, and much like, uh, the Samuel Smith House here with Betsy. You know, when, when they have something special and event coming up, our, our parks crew goes over and takes care of, of, you know, the property, mowing it and trimming and things like that. And then in the off-season, as our time allows, we'll go in and do larger projects to do brush removal or, or other things as, as we can. But, um, Dan is, is correct. We go there, um, you know, not as often as we go to other parks. We go there periodically and, and certainly in advance of any type of special events that they have.
Thank you. And John, you had something else?
Uh, our old favorite, three twenty. Miscellaneous supplies. I had that by five hundred dollars. Cut that from a thousand to five hundred.
Yes, she's fully expended. She has an encumbrance and a bill in the finance office. So she's, it's a hundred percent over here. So there's a, yeah, there's a bill in transit, so she's, she's spent the three hundred dollars she's had so far.
Okay.
Um, could I, could I ask a question about the telephone? Are we, I mean, it sounds like we're trying to centralize all the phones.
I think that's, I think maybe internet or like a MiFi, 'cause they feel it's too far away to be part of, um, like the community center's internet. So I think they have to have their own little...
Doesn't quite make it, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just far enough away that they can't get in on their signal, and so they have to have their own...
Yeah, they're not part of our network, I'm pretty sure. We can't like transfer a phone line to them.
That's the problem. It's been a problem for them.
Something with a two-hundred-year-old building?
Yeah, I might have this five G over there.
So we're gonna leave that, three twenty as it is? Is that what I understand?
Sounds like they do.
You know, if I, if I may, you know, uh, the new curator is really trying hard to, you know, to make do with what...
Yeah.
Resources she has. I would hate to cut it, and, you know, I think if things go well this year, maybe we're gonna wanna maybe try to do a little more next year for them. But she's, let's see how it goes over the summer.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I would hate to touch anything.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's an important part of the town.
Yeah, and, and I think more and more, it's gonna be something people really come to appreciate, so, with all her inputs.
Did we cut the thousand dollars from landscaping manager, no?
No.
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 So we're good with Brookside? Town Building Committee? Really have anything for that?
Do they have anything going on? Did they close out all the, uh, projects they were working on? The schools are all closed out?
All the schools are closed out. I, I don't see any expenses with postage. I think the town's centralizing postage for most parks, so I think we can get rid of the hundred dollars.
Nothing really, too much going on.
I don't think they've met this year. Uh, maybe they have, I'm just not looking at it, but...
So with this, with the, um, getting the town hall handicap accessible, that's not coming in through here at all? They wouldn't be called on?
I don't think they're involved with that.
I, I think they have to be. I tried reading, um, the town building committee's chart, uh, you know, ordinance, when we were preparing for the capital approval committee, 'cause they kind of go hand-in-hand a little bit, right?
Yeah.
The, the town building committee's ordinance, it's like, if they can assign the project to the Board of Selectmen. So unless the Board of Selectmen don't assign them the project, they're not a part of it, so, um...
The public, they were, I think the Public Safety Complex was the last big project.
Yeah.
But they were involved.
They were, they had a good run there with the public safety building and all the schools. They were...
Yeah, they're, they're very busy. So they're in a lull, I would say, right now.
So maybe we just keep enough in there to keep the accounts open and...
Yeah, I, I don't see a single dollar spent on that account this year. So...
So why don't we, uh...
Put everything down to...
Oh, but you know what? We have all those roof projects at the school.
That's gonna be coming up.
If those get assigned to them.
Yeah, that's right. That's gonna be next year.
Because this is for next year's budget, so all those capital projects we have, like the community center roof and all those projects, those fall under, do we...
So we need a building committee?
We might just, maybe just leave it alone and see how it goes.
Yeah, I, I, that just kind of hit me there.
Yeah, that's right, 'cause this is twenty-five, yeah.
This is for next year, and all those capital projects, depending they make it through the approval process.
Yeah, if they start hitting.
Yeah, so that's just something to keep in mind.
Did you want to eliminate the postage stuff?
I did, yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion for that. So for the Town Building Committee, number one thirty-five, um, I move that we eliminate the postage, um, expense, um, number two oh four of one hundred dollars to zero.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six-zero-zero.
I see we do the same for miscellaneous supplies?
Yep.
'Cause it, they would come from, you know, Dan's up, you know, the first selectman's office in my office, if they need something. I don't know what really matters, but...
Keep going there?
Okay, um, I move that for the Town Building Committee, number one thirty-five, that the miscellaneous supply line three twenty be reduced, um, from two hundred dollars to zero.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six-zero-zero.
Okay, so real quickly, getting into harbor management. Before, when I was talking about Wells Co., the Wells, uh, Water, Fish, and Slime Shellfish Commission, that's kind of, um, self-funded based on the permits they're pulling in. That, um, is separate from the Harbor Management Commission, which has its own fund now. So I just wanted to, there's a dollar amount in Wells Co. in case they need future contributions from us. But harbor management will be entirely self-sustaining, so I just mixed up the two of those.
Okay.
So just wanted to clarify that, all right? So this is a zero budget, this will go away in the general fund. The town's done funding harbor management activities.
Good, thank you.
So...
And on to one thirty-eight, Conservation of Natural Resources Commission. So what have they spent so far this year?
Zero on miscellaneous supplies.
Okay.
So Conservation of Natural Resources falls under that land use department downstairs, so, um, I know we've been cutting back all those departments down there, but...
Um... And have they used any of the meetings, conferences?
Fifty dollars.
Okay. Uh, you know, I think the whole thing is such a small dollar amount, I'd just leave it alone, but anyone wants to? I agree. Okay. Historic Properties Commission. Another minimalist type of account. So I don't have anything to say here. Anyone?
I see, um, on the second page, oh, I'm sorry, this is last year's budget, never mind. You see two-two-two, that it says last year.
The twenty we moved to the capital?
Yeah, that was, uh, correct, yeah.
Yeah.
I could have copied that, I bet.
Yeah, that was me.
What was the question?
Two-two-two, I think, correct. In the, in the discussion in our book?
Okay.
It has twenty thousand for a service contract for the, the barn roof?
Correct. We, we moved it to the, uh, capital. It's under Public Works.
Okay.
In capital.
Okay.
Just 'cause it's, it's, it's a capital project, so, um, we re- reallocated it.
Okay.
And look, I guess what we were gonna do with miscellaneous supplies?
They're there.
Only one way for that place, right?
Okay. On to two fourteen, Public Safety Emergency Management. So... This is kind of where we, we, uh... One of the main jobs here at the town is public safety. And I think, other than a couple of small things in regard to training, uniform, and miscellaneous supplies, that's really the only thing I was going to bring up. Does anyone have anything above, um, that's... that they were going to suggest? Kevin, you have?
No, so the one thing I just wanna say, with this particular department, next year you'll notice, these accounts are not gonna be, have the same names. The amounts will be the same, but they're not gonna have the same names. It's considered, it says miscellaneous supplies, but really it should be technical supplies, right? Because those are supplies specific to that department. Miscellaneous supplies almost sounds like, you know, office supplies. So they're, that'll, those will be broken out in the future. Similar to like with park and rec, there's like the field maintenance and equipment maintenance. Those will be technical supply and technical service account names. So it'll be more uniform, just so everyone's aware.
And what have they expended so far in the training, uniform and technical supplies?
Training, most fully spent. Technical supplies, they've spent sixteen, five of the nineteen. They transferred in twenty-four hundred. They transferred two hundred out of phones, twenty-two hundred out of that emergency resources line to fund some more miscellaneous supplies. I don't see the uniforms.
Three thirteen? Uniforms might be on union contract.
In case you look for some. I don't see uniforms.
Oh, I just, I'm looking at the entire. Oh, I'm, I'm in, I'm in dispatch, sorry. Sorry.
I'm going, okay, I haven't, it used to be a problem.
Okay.
Alright, Danielle, take your book back.
Yep. So I don't, does anyone have anything under public safety then?
I have some questions.
Okay.
Under the narrative on the three twenty, four, it says supplies, which is, it doesn't look like technical supplies. Eight hundred dollars, copy of paper, labels, writing pads, pens, pencils. That was one. Then down on mobile accessories was a hundred and fifty dollars for screen protectors, cases, chargers. Kind of, kind of vague on what that is. And then going down to E O C activation, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred dollars. It looks like that, uh, is staff supplies for storms and real world emergencies. And then down at the bottom where it says repairs, twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars.
For E O C equipment?
Was that?
For the E O, if something breaks in there, private placement of a computer, things like that, I imagine. Or radios.
Can you, can you see exactly what they spent for those items or not? Or you just?
It's just one line item. I can get in the detail.
Well, I think she's, that's in the, in the, she describes it all in the narrative after the budget, right? I, I, you know what I think the issue is, miscellaneous supplies just sounds like it's, you know, a small item.
Yeah.
And so then when you've got miscellaneous supplies for twenty thousand dollars, it sounds, you know, like.
What's going on?
Yeah. So, you know, I don't know whether as we go to the new account setup, we can come up with a couple of line items that, you know, some of these can be put together with a better.
This one would be broken up into three ways, just looking at a high level. You'd have office supplies.
Yep.
That would include the Adobe supplies, mobile accessories, things like that, the printer.
Yeah.
And then you have technical supplies, which includes staff activation, COVID P P, things like that.
Yeah.
And then you'd have a software line for the fifty-five hundred and things like that, so.
Yeah.
It'd be broken up three ways.
So for, for, as we move forward with the system, I would recommend that.
Yep.
Okay. And their expenditures to date through?
Miscellaneous supplies, sixteen, five.
Okay, so I think she's got it all. And then. Alright, does anyone have anything there then? Nope, so. On to two fifteen, Public Safety Dispatch. And this is where I was looking at what they had expended through March in two forty-three, three thirteen and three twenty. Where are they?
So today's payroll training, they spent just under five thousand. So it's training payroll, training, you know, operating expense, they, five thousand on our budget, they spent just under a thousand. Uniforms, five thousand on our budgeted, fourteen sixty-five. Miscellaneous supplies, twenty-five hundred dollars, six ten. The only thing I wanna check on real quick before we cut uniforms is, I just wanna check their contract, sometimes it might get paid out at year end. So let me just check that first.
Effective January twenty twenty-three, dispatch transition to a mandatory uniform policy, so.
Let me just pull that up and see what their uniform sizes.
So if they didn't spend anything, what have they been wearing?
I've never seen a dispatcher behind that glass. They can see me. Actually, I think they can listen to this.
Yes.
They'll listen.
That's what I was gonna say, feel free to call in if.
Send an email. Okay, I don't, um. I don't see anything in the contract.
So again, generally speaking, when I see a line item increasing, you know, from six thousand up to nine thousand, and they've only spent, what's so far in the training payroll?
Thousand dollars.
A thousand?
Oh, no, training payroll, hold on, that was.
Two seventeen?
Training payroll, the payroll side, they said five thousand of the six thousand.
Okay.
It's two forty-three, they've only spent a thousand.
Okay, so then nine thousand, I think, could be reduced. I would leave it, you know, probably at seven thousand?
More than that.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to reduce two seventeen, training payroll from nine thousand, reduce it two thousand to seven thousand. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And now going down to training. They asked for a thousand dollar increase, but they've only expended
A thousand.
One thousand so far? So. I would say reduce it to the five thousand from last year's budget. So I'll make a motion to reduce two forty-three by a thousand to five thousand.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any? Nope. Motion carries, six, zero, zero. And uniforms, I think they were thirty-three percent of the way through on three thirteen, back when I looked at it in March. Need to see what they've spent so far.
Just pulling it up right. There's been fifteen hundred to date. Let me see what they spent last year. Maybe they do like something in.
They might buy a bulk thing all at once.
So last year, the, the year before, they only spent twenty-four hundred. So. Yep. So.
Well, I am going to make a motion that we reduce three thirteen, uniforms by one thousand dollars to a new budget of four thousand. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six, zero, zero. And miscellaneous supplies, how much have we spent? That looks like in twenty twenty-three, their actual was three thousand eight sixty-six. And how much have they spent so far?
Six, ten. Seven, seven fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Yep.
Well, I, I'd make a motion to reduce that by a thousand to a balance of fifteen hundred in miscellaneous supplies, three twenty. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six, zero, zero. Okay. Onto two sixteen, Public Safety Police Department. Anyone have anything that they wanted to do there?
Thought my Excel froze. I had a panic attack, my Excel's about to stop working.
I just, I had a question on five fifteen overtime for boat duty. Twenty thousand dollars. Is what they proposed. How much have they spent?
Sixty-five hundred dollars, but the boat's not in the water right now, I'm pretty sure. I think it goes in after Memorial Day, maybe, or the, the week of Memorial Day, probably. I would imagine it goes in. So let me just look at what they spent the year prior. Thirty, second, let me pull this up. So sixty-five hundred this year. Last year we used about thirteen, six, fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand.
Yep. So, but I know, I think one of the, um, yeah, nevermind. Yeah, fourteen thousand prior year.
That was last year.
Well.
Maybe, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, you know, I don't like the, you know, every year adding on a few thousand, just, you know, so that every single year the budget keeps growing, so.
I was gonna recommend a four thousand dollar cut to sixteen thousand. We should give them two thousand over last year.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six, zero, zero.
Negative four thousand.
Negative four thousand, yes. Anyone have anything else in Public Safety?
I have another question. On going down to operating expenses. Public relations, three twenty-nine. Double to thirty-five hundred, a little more than doubled.
I think that, is that for the National Night Out, maybe? That started last year, I believe.
Which is. Basically publication. Distributed to the public.
Yeah, that's mentioned, National Night Out.
Citizens Police Academy and National Night Out. So they're probably ramping up National Night Out, because I know that was, it's been a success.
Yeah.
So they're probably putting a little more resources to that.
It's the same as what it was budgeted last year. Didn't have any increase.
Yeah.
Currently, we have a budget of, like in fiscal twenty-four, we're currently in, thirty-five hundred dollar budget, we spent about twelve fifty. So, but I don't know timing of when, because I think National Night is in August.
I was in the, I was in the late summer.
Yes, they probably doing some buying maybe later in June, maybe. I'm not quite sure the timing of all that.
So, just a question, but no motion there?
No, not for me.
Alright. How about under, in contracted, in operations, computer maintenance? You know, what, what have they spent so far there in two fourteen?
Four hundred dollars. Let me check what they spent last year, though. They might hold up to some of these until, to see where they are with everything else. So the prior year, they spent twenty-three hundred. So. Currently, you ever spend any? Get four hundred bucks.
I'd make a motion to reduce computer maintenance by two thousand dollars to a balance of three thousand.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, six, zero, zero. Radio maintenance. So it looks like in twenty twenty-three, they spent thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-three. And they say the increase is to reflect any needed repairs on costlier radios and the upgraded system.
We have just bought all those new radios, so I don't know when they went into, when they went into service, but I don't know if they're still under any type of warranty or any kind of. I think what they shouldn't be breaking down after.
So we have about four thousand dollars between encumbrances and purchases so far. Let me just check last year.
Do you know when that new radio service, those radios went into service?
I do not, are you talking, are we funded stuff?
Four sixty-six.
It, it looks like it, it went into effect already because it looks like.
Prior year, we spent thirteen.
Cause usually you get the first, first year, he's usually covered and then, then you have to start paying for the maintenance contracts after that.
Yeah, I would imagine that's the encumbered. Yeah, I, I would think that the radios should be in. Yeah, I would think that the radio should be in pretty good shape because of the ARPA funding.
So. Would you like to make a motion?
Did you say they've only spent forty-five hundred so far this year?
Correct. Um, last year, they spent thirteen, roughly fourteen, and then in twenty twenty-two, they also spent thirteen-ish. So um I don't see anything more than about fourteen thousand.
Yeah, I, I would recommend, or I'll make a motion of cutting ten thousand from that line from twenty-five thousand. Okay, it's line two twenty-one, radio maintenance in department two sixteen. So cutting ten thousand to get a final figure of fifteen thousand.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Yeah. I, I definitely agree with cutting this, I'm just wondering whether um that's just cutting it a little bit too close, if we've been spending, you know, fourteen thousand right in there. So um you know, I, I think that I would prefer it at a twenty thousand to give them a little bit of a cushion. But the motion's been made and seconded, so um is there any other discussion?
Well, if it's new radios between twenty-three and twenty-four, you could see where the cost should go down. So uh
Okay.
So I think I, I think twenty is more than, I might go split the difference to seventeen fifty, that would be.
There's a motion on the table.
Yeah, there is a motion, so um, let's uh, any further discussion? Um, all those in favor of Rich's motion to decrease it to fifteen thousand, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so um are there any other motions anyone would like to make?
Well, I'd move that we um reduce the radio maintenance in the public safety budget to seventeen thousand five hundred.
I'll second that. All, any further discussion? All those in favor of Jay's motion to move it to seventeen five hundred, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six yards zero. And where are we in boat storage so far, maintenance? Is that here to date?
Uh, two thousand dollars in that boat storage line. Six let me just check last year, because obviously it's still in storage. Just taking a look.
Uh, I think we're at six thousand forty-six.
Yep, so we spent six thousand dollars prior year.
Okay.
We had to do a transfer in for fifteen hundred prior year.
Okay, so.
So sixty-five hundred's probably the inflation adjusted cost.
Okay.
Is there anything we can do about the telephones and internet, or is that part of the new building?
I think that's for, um, because I think that emergency management has all of I don't know, really. I don't want to, I don't want to lie to you and tell you that's for the telephones, and that's all under like IT or something.
Yeah, I just don't want to duplicate, you know, IT was talking about um some of the phone stuff.
Six three hundred. So two years ago, last year, we spent four thousand dollars. This current year, we are projecting to spend we've already spent four thousand dollars, we have twenty-one hundred encumbered, we have twenty-five hundred left. Just look and see what we're paying monthly. So there's two things, some of it is cell, thirty-five hundred dollars is cell phones, twenty-seven hundred is blanket monthly service. Comcast for the extra telephones that we call over there. So they pay for their own. Yes, so. Might be somewhere up there.
So. I'm good?
Okay.
Are you good?
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah. Um. Does anyone have any other items they want to look at in public safety?
I just was curious, um with the prisoner expenses, has that been going up each year since we've been able to house prisoners? Because I'm wondering if the increase is enough.
So it was three thousand four forty-three in twenty twenty-three.
So we've already spent twenty-nine hundred dollars, and the other thousands encumbered. So.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I was almost thinking increasing it, and I know that's against what we're trying to do, but.
All right, anyone, anything else? Just trying to, wait, we've got to clear the room at seven thirty, so.
I don't, I think we have to do another meeting. We haven't done capital.
Yeah, does the capital, just the, remember, the cruisers are, the overtime case with cruisers, right? On the capital side, the, oh, the private duty pays for the cruisers.
Normally, I don't think they're going to be able to this year. So, because they, think about the last five years, they've been leasing two cruisers, they're paying for ten, they have ten lease payments for ten cruisers. So um, the chief earlier this year asked um how much money was left in that fund, and it was negative at that time. And they've since, they've, I haven't ran the report since, so I'll have to run that through for our next meeting.
I think with all the with the project going on, they'd be
Yeah.
building that up.
There's quite of a, those ten cruisers we're paying for are pretty expensive.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so anything else with public safety? No? And so so the as we know, we are kind of zeroing out the Niantic Fire Department and the um Flanders Fire Department. And under the there's some still left in public safety, Fire Marshal. And then we'll have the um the new Eastline Fire Services, but we still have um a small amount. And here's another um suggestion under miscellaneous supplies to kind of break things out a little bit more, but three thousand five hundred sounds like a lot, but I didn't have anything here. Does anyone have any other issues with public safety Fire Marshal? Nope. So we're moving on to um, the new Eastline Fire Service. And so this is, you know, a new department putting together all um under, I don't know, Dan, whether do you want to say just any two sentences about?
We're not, I mean, you know, we're trying to create this, the Eastline Fire Service, and um we sort of planned out the way the numbers are going, are working, and um I hope, I hope it doesn't get to start, so I can have the opportunity to try to make this work this year.
And I think it's an excellent idea, and I think we've got the right man for the job, too, and I, he has a lot of experience
Yes.
in budgeting, so um I'm, I'm fully supportive of this.
And I appreciate the support from the board, and um hopefully next year, it'll, you know, really things will have gelled, and every, all the pieces of the puzzle will be in place. The first piece, of course, is right here. And, uh, you know, if the budget survives, then we can do the contractual legal stuff that we have to do afterwards.
Anyone have any comments, suggestions?
I mean, just based on, you know, my, my thoughts on the last, um, last meeting when we discussed it, that, I feel that the EMS is driving all this, and um, the fireside, you know, not so much, um we haven't really gotten everybody together to I, I think to properly put this together, um so I'm just going to make a motion at this time that we not fud the extra union firefighter at this time.
So if I may, I mean, we really, you know, we're trying to round out, we're trying to get to this twenty-four forty-eight schedule and have adequate coverage throughout town for the various shifts, and we really uh, we're going to make that happen, we really need the additional firefighter. I think that's really important, and it's critical, I think, to public safety. The other thing is, you know, with last night in Board of Selectmen, we did extend uh the um uh, the Eastline Ambulance Service and um their contractual arrangement with the Town of Eastline, we kicked it over for one more year. And so now that gives us this window of opportunity to renegotiate that arrangement with the Eastline Ambulance Association. So uh, I'm trying to line up all the pieces of the puzzle here, so that over the next twelve months, um we'll have a better arrangement with the Eastline Ambulance Association. Uh, today, I did research on what has been on file with both the Flanders Fire Service and the Niantic Fire Service, and I believe you know, the, their charter, or their filing with the State of Connecticut was recorded on the Eastline Land Records, and one was from nineteen twenty-three, and one was, I think, a little bit later than that. So I'm, I've, I've assembled that, I'm also going now to go to the State of Connecticut, get into the filings with the Secretary of State, and see exactly, you know, who the members are, the, uh of those corporations. So I'm trying to put all the pieces of the puzzle together, so we can finally solidify this new system, so that's where I'm at, and, and, but this really is, without having the proper funding, then I really can't move forward.
So, did you make that motion?
Yes, I made a motion.
Okay. Did we have?
Nobody seconded it. I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Um, I, I I think that we need to give this new concept a chance, so I'm in favor of continuing to fund it, or starting to fund it um, fully based on the budget that we have here.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
These have opposed.
So uh, motion fails two, four, zero. Does anyone have any other motions?
I'll put forth a motion to fully fund the Public Safety Slam Fire Service, Department two twenty-five as budgeted.
Second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One, so that motion carries, five, one, zero.
I thank you for your, I thank the board for its support, and I'll do my best not to let you down and let the town down, and try to bring this to where it needs to be, year from now.
Thank you. Um on to public safety, animal control. So.
How much veterinary services have been used? I'm sure that's very variable, but.
It depends on what's happening with animals there, but. So to date, we spent two thousand dollars, but we have four thousand encumbered, uh, two thousand spent, two thousand encumbered, around three thousand left. Look what happened last year.
Yeah, I see they didn't spend much last year.
Last year, they spent six hundred bucks, so we're already being four Xed. We spent the year prior, so it's really depend, you know, animal dependent.
Now, if we make any changes in this, do we have to put it through Waterford, since they're sharing?
We didn't last year.
Okay.
So. Great, that's, that's interesting. And you know, they didn't ask me for a budget. They pulled it off.
I have a, a question with the two training lines. Four seventeen under personnel services and three twenty-six under operating expenses. There is no narrative with this.
So I think it's similar to dispatch, training payroll is the first one, training supplies is the second one.
Okay.
So, anyone have anything for this? Be good with that?
I don't have anything.
Okay, so. That's good. Move on to public works and sanitation, highway and sanitation. And can you um tell me where we are in two twenty-four road reconstruction and repair? It's under
So, this is the one, so road reconstruction, we spent how much were we paying last year? That was last year. Better nervous, we spent two hundred thousand. To date, we have spent hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and the rest is encumbered.
So, the rest?
You guys, you guys, statement catch basins.
But I mean, so it's a hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred is fully, and so.
Encumbered slash.
Okay, so. You know, I'm sort of back in that, you know, a six point three three percent increase is still, you know. I think I would make a motion to um propose a budget of two hundred and four thousand there, so still higher. Um, so that would be a decrease of six thousand. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six zero zero. Sort of in the same vein, um, going from two hundred and sixty thousand in fleet maintenance, you know, up seven point six nine to two hundred and eighty thousand. Don't know where we are so far in fleet maintain.
If they were higher last year.
Fleet maintenance, we transferred thirty thousand to it.
Uh-huh.
We spent two hundred thousand, it was fully encumbered.
So, the two, two hundred and sixty thousand is fully encumbered.
It's two, two hundred and ninety thousand.
Two hundred and ninety.
Because there's a thirty thousand on transfer that you guys will see next week on Wednesday.
Okay.
But, uh, so there's two hundred and one thousand that we spent, there's eighty-nine thousand encumbered.
Okay.
So the one.
So I guess I'd leave that alone. Anyone have anything?
Yeah, the supplies and miscellaneous, um, I know you're favorites, three twenty. But, you know, they don't have a very good explanation of how they're spending that money, so I'm just wondering how much they've spent so far.
About twenty thousand.
Okay.
And they transferred twenty-five hundred to that one.
Okay.
So that goes to actually twenty-seven five. That's, uh, three hundred dash three twenty. Get the one right there. Do you think I just done, five minutes left?
Yep. So, we'll finish up with this public works and highway sanitation. Does anyone have any other for this budget? No, I think we're good with this. And then we will.
So we have a regular meeting next Wednesday?
Yep.
Um, do you want me to notice a different day or is that fine or what is your thoughts?
I guess it depends on how, what, what does our agenda look like?
We have budget transfers, um, anything else? I think just budget transfers.
Just those budget transfers.
So should we have?
But you won't be here.
Right, I'll be out of town and I'll be out of town.
So then.
I don't know what, I don't know what your capabilities are, but, uh, I'll give you a Starlink and, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I'll have an internet, right, I'll have internet access.
Yeah.
That works for you, Jay.
Nice.
What's that?
Yeah, I think Richard's going to be.
I, I will not, I will not be in an area that is serviced. It's a, it's a digital wasteland.
Well, the thing is, we, if we don't finish, you know, we're, we're running down the clock here.
Yeah.
So, um, do you want to, um, you know, through the rest of the budget, do you want to let me know what other suggestions you'd be making and I could make them for you?
That, that would probably work, I hadn't anticipated doing that tonight, but.
No, well.
But I, I'm leaving tomorrow, so, yeah.
Well, I think that book could fit in your suitcase.
So would we also have a meeting on the fifteenth, April fifteenth, the Monday, is that a possibility?
It could be, so our next meeting, the public hearing is the twenty-ninth. So I think we have to notice that ten days in advance, the nineteenth, so. Nineteenth will be a Friday, um, so we could do the fifteenth.
If that, if that works for others, I'd.
Yeah, I'd much rather do that than zoom in.
Okay, can?
I can do the fifteen.
April fifteenth looks for me.
We could talk about the budget at the regular meeting and then hear what you guys have to say about the change that we made, just to explain things.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Like that, because we have one.
Yeah.
We have four.
Yeah.
So, just a thought.
No, that, that sounds like a good idea and.
All right, I can try to zoom in.
Or zoom in or just if there's any suggestions that you want to make for cuts, email Denise.
Okay.
I think that would, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, so April, uh, April fifteenth, Monday, I will get that notice.
Thank you very much.
Five-thirty in this room, I'll, I'll make sure first that this room is available.
Was there a motion to, to?
Yeah, or should we, public discussion, uh, board comments?
Will we adjourn?
Second, all those in favor, aye?